Since becoming an MEP, I was committed to promoting this issue at every possible level. I have spoken six times about the debt of Germany towards Greece in the plenary of the EP, in Strasbourg and in Brussels. And I think that this is a significant initiative, because other colleagues had the possibility to learn about the state of play on this issue. I've also tried to have a public hearing on the question of German debt or German reparations towards Greece. This public hearing should be organized by the petitions committee. This is what I tried to achieve, but despite all my efforts, I haven't managed it until now. At the end of last December, we had a first discussion with the political movement in which I participate, the Citizens Against the Memorandum. We tried to inform public opinion, to raise this issue, and I think that there was a lot of impact. MEPs from other member states as well took part and took a stand. So this initiative is of a different nature, the present, today's initiative. Our meeting will have three parts. During the first part, we will talk about the massacre in Comeno. We have a network of professors who have tried to raise awareness about this issue through their own initiative. And they make presentations to classes of elementary education. The teachers are not just from the Comeno village, but also from the island of Kost and from the city of Thibes, or Thiva. They aim to raise awareness and make sure that these issues are not forgotten, but without promoting hatred. But of course, we try to make justified claims for these issues. So these professors, these colleagues of the teaching staff, have tried to raise awareness. There's another network from the other village that was destroyed, of Vistomo, who have similar activities, and so the second part of our meeting will be a presentation of their activities, the teachers from Vistomo. And at the end, we will have a discussion with the participation of MEPs, as foreseen on the programme. So we'll have a discussion. Since time is limited, because there's also interpretation, we have interpretation from and into English, Polish and Greek. And we have our speakers, Mr. Krasnodewski, who's from Poland and who will take the floor, on issues, similar issues concerning Poland, issues of reparations. He's a member of the ECR, European Conservatives and Reformist political group, and also Leonora Ivi, from the movement of the Five Stars of Italy, Cinque Stelle. And she helped us in our effort to organize a hearing at the petitions committee. And we also have the MEP from Syriza, from Greece, Mr. Kulnoglu. Thank you for your presence. So let us start with a brief message of greetings from the mayor of Comeno. I am the mayor of the community of Comeno, and I'm really moved to be here. I would like to thank very much Mr. Nortis Marias for his readiness to help us on this issue. I'd like to congratulate the ladies, the teachers, from the network for their work to help us present the issue of Comeno, of a small village. Ladies and gentlemen, dear MEPs, even today, the impact of this Holocaust during the occupation are with us. It was not just the elimination of hundreds of our fellow villagers during the occupation, but also the terrible economic destruction that ensued. I am a second-generation descendant of those massacred. My grandfather survived the attack. But these terrible events were a shock even for survivors. But the survivors were there as living witnesses that help us remember, like Artemisia Condoyani, who is present today. It's seventy-two years since the 16th of August, 43. And over our village, we still have a black cloud. The spirit of the martyrs and the need for justice is still there. And the need for reparations from Germany to Greece is clear, for the destruction, the looting, the pillaging. We do not seek revenge, nor do we beg. We demand justice. We demand that our relations with Germany be on a better basis. Even today, despite our problems, we have to live together within the framework of the European Union, without debts. During the Second World War, Greece suffered a loss of thirteen point five percent of its population. Comeno was forty-seven percent, in Vistomo thirty-seven percent. This was due to disease, low birth rate. It was a situation that was close to genocide. Ninety-four children died in Comeno, one hundred and seventeen women. On the whole, three hundred and seventeen victims in Comeno. So the occupation had terrible consequences for Greece. So our country lagged behind many other countries because of the occupation. So we lagged behind in the social and economic area. So if we want to find the real reasons, the real causes of our present situation, we must realize that the fact that we never achieved development as much as we should have done, we did not have enough infrastructure, enough production, to reach self-sufficiency. And that had to do with the elimination of our substantial number of our people and the destruction of our infrastructure and the looting of our wealth by the Axis powers, and in particular by Germany. I wish and I hope that after our meeting today, memory will be stronger and that there will be research so that history can be at our side. Let the example of those who died be an example of memory and action to find a solution to our difficult situation. We cannot forget, we will never forget. So, dear members of the European Parliament, please stand at our side in our efforts. This is something that we owe to future generations. And also, we owe it to those who gave their lives so that we can be free today. This historic memory should be the root for humanity and culture and civilization. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor of this war-stricken village. As I said, Ms. Artemisia Condoyani is right next to me, and she will take the floor right after this short presentation that Ms. Nektaria Stuka has prepared. She will kindly present the work of this network of teachers and professors. She will also present the participants to this network. Please, you have the floor. Ms. Stuka.
Dear members of the European Parliament, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank you for your presence here. It is an honour for us. First of all, I would like to thank you on behalf of my colleagues, MEP Marias, for his invitation to the European Parliament and for the support he has given to our efforts so far. I have been sent to Comeno in Arta, the village of Comeno in Arta, three years ago as a teacher, and in my interaction with the villagers there, I was so much struck and moved that I felt I was obliged to deeply look into the historical tragedy of Comeno, which is a massacre and a crime, not only against the village of Comeno, but also a crime against humanity. It is difficult to understand how a people that was at the forefront of values like freedom, like... and that has been at the forefront of enlightenment had nevertheless managed to create these massacres and these crimes of Nazis. No war ever justifies the killing of children, of women, the lootings. All these are things that did happen in Comeno and with extreme brutality. So in collaboration with colleagues from throughout Greece, we started in September an effort to raise awareness about the village of Comeno, that massacre has not been as much publicized as other massacres during the Second World Wars. So we would like to raise this awareness so that future citizens understand what happened and enshrine values and have the empathy necessary to avoid future crimes, future war crimes. So we are trying to raise awareness about the historical events. And many of my colleagues, professors and teachers are present here today, from Arta, Mr. Tsogas Padellis, a teacher, and myself, from the prefecture of Etelogarnania, school inspector Ms. Sandonopoulos, Ms. Andoni Vasiliaki and Ms. Kanine Irini, from Thiva, Ms. Elena Sarri, from the island of Lesbos, Ms. Tzoleryvanastatsia and Mr. Thespa Teris Kothandinos, Phthorakopoulou Pataskevi from the island of Kost, Ms. Hatziv Yeris Tomás and Mr. Thanas Papanikolao and Ms. Sutsia Fotini from the region of Attika, from Athens, and Mr. Nagy Lisavet from Ksanti, the prefecture of Ksanti in the north. So I would like to start my presentation of the chronicle of the historical events with a video in which a German student is addressing the students in Comeno. Do you have a technical problem? Please. Well, we'll deal with these small technical glitches very quickly. Let me also inform you that Ms. Sakorafa, a member of the European Parliament from Syriza, is also present. We also have the MEP from Cyprus, colleague Mr. Christoforo. Welcome, Mr. Christoforo. Also present in the room are assistants from the office of MEP Andrew Laitis. Are we ready now? I'm sure everything will be fine. Still, as you see, we also have technical problems like in the previous event we had organized. Please continue. Floor.
Okay.
Okay. So in the meantime, I would like to ask Ms. Condoyani, Ms. Artemisia Condoyani, to describe her own experience, this dramatic experience from that time. I wanted to have Ms. Condoyani after the video, but since we have this little technical problem, Artemisia, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks very much to all of you, MEP Marias, and also all the people present in the room. It's difficult for me to describe. We came back at home, and my father asked me to sleep at the outside, where we had a small shed to escape the massacre. We saw people fleeing. We were worried about the fate of our fellow villagers, of our mother, of our sisters and brothers. Some of us offered an escape route through the river, but fortunately, we did not follow them, because we would have been drowned like others did. And we heard the first shot. And we understood that they were killing all the men from the village. My father told us that we should stay at home. We were also worried that the Nazis might even set our homes to fire. It was impossible to escape. Because there was a German armored car that had fallen into a river. Fortunately, they were not attacked by the Greeks. Otherwise, they would have completely wiped out the village of Comeno. They were coming to the village of Comeno in order to get food.
Then the next day, the mayor and a priest told us that we shouldn't be afraid. There won't be any reprisals, because there haven't been any attacks. So we have nothing to fear. So we all stayed at our village, because we believed the mayor. Who was killed afterwards? My father knew that there was danger. So he told my mother, "I hear gunshots. So people are killed." So my mother told him, "Since they are killing men, you should go away. You should go away." But my father said, "But where should I go? I mean, they're killing people outside." And my mother said, "Go outside and hide inside a dike." So some people decided to try and hide, while others decided to stay in their homes. They didn't know what to do. Somebody tried to escape, so he ran out of his house. And he saw the Germans armed, so he tried to flee. But where would they go? They decided to go and hide in a small garden. Thirty people hid in a small garden, under some weeds, among some weeds, and they survived. But while they were hiding there, they heard the children who were being burnt alive. And a neighbor tried to follow where the German was going. And my mother was outside the house, on the steps. But the child she was holding fell. She tried to pick it up. And she also had an axe and tried to stop him. So she managed to pick up her baby and hid inside the house. And they had a sword. So she was holding the sword to try to defend the house. But there were many Germans, forty, fifty cars. My husband had livestock, so he went there, he went there to the shed with his livestock. And so he survived. I wasn't married to him then. But they saw that the Germans were looking at them in a strange manner, so they hid in a tree. That was before they reached the village. Yes, my husband, yes, I wasn't married to him. He was fourteen, I was eleven. That's what I mean. So he ran to another village and survived. And also one of his brothers and one of his sister, while my father-in-law, my mother-in-law and two other daughters were killed. My mother was shot on the steps outside the house. And the children were burnt inside the house, because they set the house on fire. And my grandmother too. So we managed to cross the river. And we heard from the other side of the river, we heard the destruction and the cries. Just a few huts where people kept animals survived. And we also had a shed near the sea, quite far away from the village, where we had maize, we had a lot of maize. We managed to cross the river, to swim across the river, since we were outside. No, no, we weren't in the village. We weren't in the village. My father had taken us to sleep there, where we had our fields, where we had olive trees and wheat. And one of my smaller brothers, the bigger one, did not survive, because he wanted to come with us to sleep outside in the open, but there had been no attacks against the Germans. I don't understand. Maybe there... Some people told the Germans that we wanted to attack them. So in the evening, at seven, eight o'clock, it was August, maybe it was six o'clock. We saw people coming from the village. And we were waiting to see if any of my relatives were among the people who came. But a neighbor, a woman neighbor, said, "Your mother has been killed." So we thought that also our father had been killed. But then we saw our father. Because as I told you, my mother had told him to go and hide. But they did not expect that there would be such an attack and such killings. So one of my uncles came, because he had been told by his wife to leave, because they expected that only the men would be executed. At that time, of course, there was no other means to inform people. There were no telephones or anything in the village. The night before the massacre, the people were worried, that's true. And my father and my uncle slept outside the house. I don't know why they were worried.
Thank you very much for sharing this experience. It's obvious that you are moved, and it is moving for us to hear you. Ms. Condoyani, we always repeat the story. And my husband wouldn't let me, he has health problems. Anyway, Mr. Marias, I would like to thank you for being here. Ms. Condoyani says, "What we are seeking is justice for our village and for all the other villages." Why did our village have to pay this high price with so many people dead? The village of Comeno never attacked Germans, never attacked anyone. I'm present here today, my older sister, my... I mean, this photo with my older sister and her children. The massacre took place on the fifteenth of August, and this photo was taken on the sixteenth. These photographs are rare, obviously. This is a unique photograph of the time. Mr. Marias, thank you very much. I'm sure that our colleagues here and our friends will listen to the presentation by Nektaria of the historical events. We also have MEP Castaldo from the Five Stars Movement here. The crimes have been recognized. It has been recognized that crimes have been committed to these villages. The question is about the reparations. Nektaria, please, let's continue. So the first thing I wanted to show you is this video from this German student to the students of the village of Comeno.
Meine lieben Freunde aus Comeno und Arten. Als ich im Sommer nach Griechenland gereist bin, hat mir eine Freundin die Geschichte eures Dorfs erzählt. Als ich nach Deutschland zurückgereist bin, habe ich nachgeforscht und Informationen gefunden. Die Geschichte eures Dorfs hat mich betroffen gemacht. Ich kann nicht glauben, dass einige meiner Landsmänner vor zweiundsiebzig Jahren so viel Böses an unschuldigen Menschen begangen haben. Der Weg ist ein Flur. Er ist gefüllt von Schmerz und Tod. Aber nicht alle Deutschen sind böse. Und diejenigen, die es sind, müssen bestraft werden. Sie verkörpern nicht das Bild unseres Landes. Wir haben hier viele griechische Freunde, und ich liebe euer Land. Unsere Völker sind heutzutage Freunde. Ich entschuldige mich für meine Fehler, die die Deutschen damals gemacht haben. Wir alle wollen nicht, dass so etwas Ähnliches noch mal passiert. Wenn ich nach Griechenland komme, werde ich euch besuchen. Vielen Grüßen aus Deutschland. Ja.
Modern tragedy. Comeno is a small village in the plain, home to eight hundred and fifty people, fifteen kilometers from the town of Arta and two kilometers from the bay of Avratikos. It is nestled between the bay of Avratikos and the river Arachos. During the Second World War, Comeno did participate in the resistance against the Nazis by supplying food to the fighters, to the resistance fighters. The German, the Nazi authorities knew about this peculiar trade that was taking place. Traders from Levkada were using their boats to bring food through Arachthos, and part of that food supply ended up into the hands of the resistance fighters. Zalmidja in August forty-three committed this massacre. In nineteen forty-three, the First Regiment of Mountain Troopers started fighting against the resistance organizations throughout Ipiros with massacres against entire villages, including Monsieur de Sauriliades. At the end of June, the commander-in-chief of this brigade, Josef Zamblike, camped in Luros. And their mission was to fight against the resistance in the region of Ioannina Prevesa until the coast. In August nineteen forty-three, squadron from the resistance organization of Elas came to the village of Komeno and asked for food supplies. But the villagers of Komeno refused, explaining that their food supplies were not sufficient. Because at the same time, they were providing food supplies to Eves, the other resistance army in Greece. So the villagers were caught in the crossfire between the two resistance organizations, the communist-supported resistance organization and the Eves organization. So on the twelfth of August, Josef Zamblike, the commander of the Ninety-Eighth Regiment, came to Komeno. When, at this point, the resistance fighters from Eves and Elas were waiting with their arms in their hands. And he writes, he reports, that Komeno is being controlled by twenty-five to thirty men fighting in the Greek resistance. At the time, we have not planned any attack. The villagers were frightened and they took food supplies and hid them in their sheds. The mayor of the community, Lambrus Urbaas, asked the Italian authorities and the collaborators about the fate of the village. And the authorities told him that they had nothing to fear. Because the villagers of Komeno were not fighting with the resistance. However, in the dawn of the sixteenth of August nineteen forty-three, hundreds of German soldiers camped outside Komeno with the mission to kill the resistance fighters and wipe out the village that was suspected to provide them with food supplies and other supplies necessary for them to fight against the Nazis. So there was a campaign of propaganda against the villagers. The previous day, the day before the massacre, on the fifteenth of August, Zamblike told his soldiers that fellow soldiers, fellow combatants, had been killed by the villagers of Komeno, and they would have to retaliate. The Nazi soldiers were not very much enthusiastic about participating in this operation. And Mazzara writes that twelve to fifteen soldiers volunteered for this operation. This led the Nazi commander to give the command to execute this operation to the second, to the Twelfth Company, led by Lieutenant Colonel, Lieutenant Captain Rezer, who used to be a member of the Hitler Youth. And the members of that company were all reservists. They took the breakfast and then the order given to them was clear. No one shall survive, everyone in the village must be executed. So they surrounded the village from all the three sides. And of course, they did not put any soldiers along the riverside of River Arachthos, thinking that River Arachthos would be a natural barrier to the fleeing villagers. So they started to burn and kill with unspoken brutality. People were woken up by the cries of people of other fellow villagers being killed. Entire families were executed. Bodies were dismembered, and it is clear that the order given by the Nazis was to destroy and exterminate the entire village. The massacre took six hours. Bodies were everywhere, in the roads. Many of these bodies were not there was no one alive to bury these bodies, and they were left to the praying animals. Three hundred and seventeen people were killed, including ninety-seven toddlers under the age of fifteen and thirty-six babies under the age of four. Many other villages were drowned in their effort to escape the village through the river Arachthos, by crossing the river Arachthos. The survivors opened holes in the ground and buried the dead to defend themselves from the possibility of disease. They had to survive. They didn't even have time to cry their dead. Let me give you some personal experiences now. In the village, Teoderos Malios Alexandra and Teoharis Karinos were being married at the time when the massacre took place. And everyone present at the feast organized after the marriage were killed. The only escape route was through the river. Hundreds of people tried to cross the river. Some tried to swim, some tried to cross it, many of them drowned. The end of the massacre came when the church bells told to send a message to the German soldiers that massacre had finished, that they had completely exterminated the village without even a shot being fired, even one shot being fired. Truth be told, German soldiers were thinking that they were going to fight against the resistance fighters. But as the time passed by and they did not even see a single soldier, they understood that they were carrying out a war crime. They tried to restrain themselves, even as they say, as they said later on, risking being, yes, risking court martial. Here's a personal experience about this. Fotistasinos explains that he was held at gunpoint by a German soldier that did not shoot him and ask him and showed him with his gun that he could escape. Even when we started to run away from him, he did not shoot. He saw us running through the fields and through the weeds. But they did not shoot either. They let us leave, they let us escape. Lieutenant Captain Rezer must have been satisfied from the way he conducted his operation. By his standards, it was successful. He did not lose a single German soldier. However, they were outraged by the fact that they have been forced to kill innocent people. This is what some German soldiers have said. Most of the German soldiers were sad. No one was in favor of taking, of conducting this operation. No one had understood that in our corps, we also had some sadists that were wild animals. We had to accept at the end that we were just following orders. Among those Greeks massacred, there were pregnant women, there were women holding babies, says Albert Zander. "I was absolutely sure that I was about to commit a crime." "I witnessed my fellow soldiers inserting beer bottles into the private parts of dead bodies." "I saw children brutally burnt," says Albert Serna. "There was no resistance from the part of the village, no shot had been fired." "However, no German soldier was even injured," says Kurter. Johannes Esser says that Rezer gave us the command, commanded us to say if asked that we were fighting against the resistance fighters in the village, which was obviously a lie. Ironically, the German authorities were being prepared for a big battle against the resistance. And they were expecting, and they were pretending to expect huge numbers of resistance fighters, but that was not the case. The only thing that could be heard in the village was the cries of the civilians being killed. And the only shots being heard were the shots being fired by the Germans. The German army bureaucracy has been trying to avoid responsibility. And they still tried to pretend that there was a fight between the German forces and the resistance fighters. This is their official report, one hundred and fifty dead from the enemy, that is the Greeks, some livestock, and guns of Italian origin. So the reports from the battalion has been confirmed that indeed the eastern part of the Bay of Artha is the safe house, is the safe enclave for the resistance fighters. Kurt Vantheim, who later became the Secretary-General of the United Nations, was at the time at the general command of the German army in Athens. And in the seventeenth of August, he wrote, "There is an increasing air force operation at the western coast in Greece and the Ionian Islands." After, for an operation by the First Division, the First Mountain Division, the village of Komeno has been seized following fierce resistance. They speak about twenty families being killed, ninety-seven toddlers being killed, and one hundred and twenty-six women. At the Nuremberg Trial, the massacre of Komeno was characterized as a horrible war crime that should not be forgotten. It is one of these cases in which unsuspecting civilians had to face an organized attack purportedly against resistance fighters. However, the civilians had no way out, no choice, no escape route. The German forces did not gather the villagers. They did not select the people that were going to kill. There was no retaliation. There was no attack against any of the German forces. Today, Komeno is a modern village with new, with new possibilities, with youth, and we also have a great number of immigrants that, however, are facing no racism, no problems, and they peacefully coexist with the villagers. Hatred does not exist in the soul of the villagers of Komeno. They participate in the commemoration events at the central place of the village. And there is a monument to remind everyone of the brutality of the Nazi crimes. And the message from the students of Komeno to everyone is, "Say no to war, no more violence, stop races, world peace." We have created a network of Greek professors and students for peace from eight schools throughout Greece, in Athens and also in other areas, who are discussing between themselves, who are exchanging. They learn their history and they're fighting against war. The initiative was started by the survivors of the Komeno massacre. It is a message towards all European citizens against war and for reconciliation. Among our initiatives was the presentation by the interview, an interview and the discussion with Ms. and Ms. Kontolyanyi. What was the most touching story for these young students? The story about the killing at the marriage, Alexandra's marriage. And this is why you see in their drawings that they mainly have this theme. The young students understand how brutal these actions have been, how important these crimes have been. They understand the brutality of the Germans, but they have no hatred towards them. They have no reason to ask for vengeance. Some of their students said, "We did not know about the story of Komeno. When we heard about it, we were frozen, petrified regarding the marriage of Alexandra." "When I first listened to the story, I couldn't, I couldn't believe it." "How is it possible for a man to behave like a wild animal to that extent?" The students have sent us drawings, but also colleagues in the island of Kors have prepared a theatrical play based on the story of the marriage, of Alexandra's marriage, and they presented this play at their school.
They'll leave a little bit.
They'll leave and they'll put us in the barn.
Let's see what we'll do with this. It looks like a dream. You say it's a tree in the forest, it goes wherever and then it's gone away.
It's not, it's a step.
Bah, I was a little scared and it was gone away. But now, you have to be careful and not to look at her eyes.
Go to the mosque, go to Maria and go to the church.
Pardon, I didn't take your eyes. Papa, I didn't take your eyes.
And you, Maria?
No, this is asleep.
As long as we finish the coffee and finish our coffee, we'll go to get the coffee.
No, I don't go. I'll wait for my coffee. I promise. Come, little girl. Do the prayer of your father. You said that too. Do the prayer. The coffee won't leave. It's already there. It'll wait for you. If it doesn't leave, I'll go. I'll drink it and I'll go.
It'll wait for you, little girl. The river is not far. Go to get the coffee and turn around.
Oh, my little boy, God will bless you.
The rain prepared us. People were tired of waiting. They wanted to go to their homes.
It seems like the last bridge. Until the children arrive at the river, the volunteers will be there too.
It's cold.
You'll put the spiro in and it'll dry. It has its own way.
The spiro. The spiro. Yes, the spiro. The spiro and the Amalia and the Avra will dry it. And Georgos. The Andriana and Chylias are small. They need a frog. Where can they find them? Us? My friend, can you hear me? What happened? The water is running.
Come, you're going to do it.
Fire!
It's coming!
Go, go, kill it!
No, my friend, no! You're alive! Why are you waiting, Alexander, here? You didn't bring me your coffee. A little bit I saw and you didn't wait for me. Your mind didn't make sense. You don't want to get angry, to hear me. I don't want to turn around, to shake their hair and go with our two heads. I lost the wind, I was washed up. And I was crying and coughing. And I didn't have a heart to turn around, to go to the rocks, to kill me, not you, my friend. Where can I find a wind now? Another river and to go shake it. And I wanted to find the hair that was wet and you were wet and you were on the shore. Leave, little girl. Look at what you've prepared and what you've opened. You leave and you don't bring me with you. Stop, stop, coffee.
Almost impossible to describe. The blood ran through the streets, ran down the streets. And there were 218 dead. Among them, 12 seniors over 70, 146 men and women between 20 and 70. 22 teenagers, between 10 and 20. 34 children, between 1 and 10 years old. Four infants, between 2 and 6 months old. In the house of the priest of the village, nine people were killed. The priest among them, and his only child. His wife was injured seriously, but survived. At the cellar of the house of Malamos, fifteen villagers hid in barrels, trying to escape. But a German came down and shot those who he could find. And then he opened the barrels and the wine started flowing, and mixing the blood. The dimension of brutality can be found in the report of the prefect, who had been appointed by the Khrystlen government. What happened is indescribable and unprecedented. Another eyewitness report. According to the historian Dieter Begemann, the butcher of Wistomo was Mr. Was Lagermann. The only Nazi ever sentenced for what happened in Wistomo is General Felb. And of course, they made up a story about why they had to destroy Wistomo. They wrote a report saying that the... Those killed were 218 guerrillas, and it was during a fight. But there was a second report by Georg Koch, who was an agent of the Gestapo, who reveals the truth. The 218 guerrillas were the three-month-old baby whose intestines were around its neck and whose mother's breasts were in its mouth, all the raped and destroyed bodies of young girls. Or Maria Filipu, whose belly was open and whose fetus was taken from her belly. Or was it the five-year-old Eftathio Stathas, who was massacred after being tortured by cutting stripes of flesh from his hands and legs, from his arms and legs? His father says that it is the way in which he was killed is more of a nightmare to him than the death itself. The next day, the corpses were either left there or buried at haste. The International Red Cross tried to help the orphans, but the grief was unsustainable. Black years and black clothes.
And the work and the way we went out in the morning to the camp. I heard from other families here. We're in a family, same, with the lager and the beer. This is the way we remember for many years. And even then, Wistomo didn't survive. I, who remembered then, didn't find the blood and the color again. Even though it took years, the blood from the blood didn't come out of the blood. And they forced the people to live and see the blood of their parents, their ancestors, and to bathe it. They didn't have the economic power to change the blood. They turned it with a dirty blood. What did they do? These little bloods followed to survive. And now I want to ask these Germans, how do they feel about all the things they did? I wanted to ask them. If they asked and complained and said that this didn't end because of what their parents and grandparents did, I would have liked to ask their spirits, if they don't exist anymore. There was so much violence inside them. And they followed to have so much with the Germans still. Why? That will remain a "why" for me. And that's why I wanted to end.
So how do we keep this memory alive? How can we put it in a framework? The people of Wistomo, since 1944, tried to deal with the collective and individual memory through the mausoleum that they have set up, the museum for the victims of Nazism, the twinning with other villages that have had the same fate, and a group between Wistomo and Hamburg, and other meetings. But above all, through the just war waged, the just struggle waged since 1994 for reparations and for justice for the victims. We as teachers, we have to transmit memory, to instruct on history and to foster moral values about peace and justice, so that the active citizen of tomorrow may be brought up. Let us show you a part of our programme, Remember the Children. We want to have this programme acted at the museum in Wistomo. And then we will try and tour with it. Four children, who were either eyewitnesses or had to do with the massacre, represent the different situations that children can understand. Keti Manolopulu tells children about the peaceful village before the war. Maria, with the bracelet that she cannot wear, talks about the rights of children.
And here, there was a small bed, that was under the bed.
It was a wooden one.
It had come from the house, from the work, and it was under the bed. Here was a small drawer, where the drawer was filled with the drawer. The drawer was half a year and a half full. My mom, it was locked here. Here it was written, "My parents". Me and my brother, Panagiotis, six hours old, and four hours old, me, we came here and immediately saw our parents, who didn't talk to us, and we started shouting, "Papa, Mom, Niko!". They didn't give us an answer. "Papa, Mom, Niko!". Niko was beaten up, the kid was beaten up, and he was thrown into the arms of my mom, bruno. My older brother, he was scared and took the Niko bag, and he threw all the stuff out and went up to my brother. Me, I went and shouted, "Mom!". And immediately, "Mom, what's going on?", and he replied, "It's down here". We started crying, the two of us. And we didn't know what to do, a four-hour-old child who saw this situation of his parents, what to say and what to do. Then we went to our dad, here, in the bed, that was the small bed here, and we started shouting, "Papa, Papa!". The dad was, except that he was killed, and the legs were broken, and the gun that shot my father. We went back from here, back to my mom. My mom cried until the door was closed, and she was hit in the door, and in the cave, very much, because we remember a four-hour-old child. And immediately, our grandma cried, she came to us, she said, "What happened, children? Why are you crying? Who is your mom? Tell us, father!". And we started crying, and she told us that they killed our parents. And we remember a specific picture, in the trap, that was next to it, was a child, a child, that I had taken with my parents. And it was a colored one. And I took it and put it on my cheek, I was a little bit tired, and my grandma said, "Kid, you're innocent. You'll kill me, the life of you. Don't kill the child!". This was the pain in my heart, because, eh, a child, and I would have wanted the child on my cheek. Grandma didn't teach me to kill. Eh, this is what I'm saying. With Argeris, we're cousins, from Dorei, and we're brothers, and they go through the same river.
This video was shown to the children without the descriptions that they couldn't bear to listen to. And the children made a new bracelet for the girl. Nita, the girl with black clothes, talks to us about remembering and facing grief. And the other children is Argeris von Buris, whom we saw in a film, a documentary for a four-year-old who survives, and how he has tried to find truth and peace. Our relationship with Argeris goes on when we visit schools together. Students welcome him warmly. He is an example for the students. As he wrote in his last book, "That I Grief for Germany", the example of Wistomo, the idea of an active, peace-loving citizen cannot grow without examples. There are many questions that have not received answers. As teachers, we hope that some of these answers will be given.
Why did I play? Because I didn't kill myself. Can anyone leave behind this old, dark one? How does the friendship start? When does the end come? Fifty and beyond years have passed from this beautiful day of June. Do you remember? Do you remember?
The people are worried about the children of yesterday and the children of tomorrow. Thank you very much for your care.
And we thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming here, for showing us these images. So now I would like to invite Professors Krasnodewski and Eleonora Ivi, the two colleagues, to join me in this panel. We have 20 minutes for our discussion, perhaps a little bit more. Professor, please, and Eleonora. Please come to the panel.
I thank the members of parliament for being here.
I would like to thank my colleagues, fellow members of the parliament for being here. I would like to give them immediately the floor to Professor Krasnodewski, who will share with us his experiences and what happened in Poland during the Second World War, and the crimes committed by Nazi Germany in Poland. And then I will give the floor to Eleonora Ivi. And of course, I believe that other fellow MEPs would like to take the floor for the discussion. Please.
Thank you very much. Maybe it would be better if I talk in Polish, because it would be translation.
There is translation.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much. I will switch to Polish. I hope the interpretation will be working, including the interpretation into Greek. Now, for my part, I'm not going to hold a lecture on what happened in Poland during the World War II between 1939 and 1945. I have some general thoughts to share with you. First of all, I'm very happy that you are here with us today.
The channel for Greek is number seven, please.
I would like to thank you first and foremost for coming here. It's extremely important to me to learn what has happened in Greece. I did not have detailed knowledge on Greek occupation. Mr. Marius told me he is reading a book by Mark Nazaria about Greek occupation, about German occupation in Greece. It is an inspiration. It is something which joins our history, Poland and Greece. Jürgen Strop, who was pacifying the Warsaw uprising and the Warsaw ghetto, and after being in Poland, he was moved to Greece. Jürgen Strop, first he was the butcher of Poland, then he was a butcher of Greece, as one of the main Nazi commanders in Greece. This is something which we have in common. Our history meets due to the figure of Jürgen Strop. In Poland, let me say that all the families were affected. The victims were there in every family. This includes my family, perhaps not directly, and we were more affected by the Soviet occupation than we were affected by the Nazi occupation. This is my part of the family. But my wife told me that her family had stories similar to yours. Villages were being destroyed, were being burned down because supposedly the villagers were supporting the resistant fighters. Four brothers of my mother-in-law, my late mother-in-law, were killed. It is a small village near the Biaovierza forest, where 220 people were murdered. Not so long ago, a museum devoted to the suffering and tragedy of Polish peasants was created. Polish villagers, devoted to the Świętokrzyskie province, where the Nazis were particularly brutal. So I have some family experience to share with you, and I always thought that this is not talked about sufficiently. The crimes have not been punished, be it on a smaller or on a larger scale. The crimes have not been punished. The perpetrators have not been brought to justice. During the Warsaw uprising in 1944, many people were murdered, many thousands of people. Reiner Falt, who was responsible for that, continued to live on peacefully as a mayor of Westerland in Germany, on the island of Selt, in Western Germany. He continued to live peacefully as a mayor. He was also a member of the regional parliament in Schleswig-Holstein. He was never punished. He was never brought to justice. This brings me to say that one thing here is particularly important. We should all fight. We should all try. And I'm speaking here in my capacity as a sociologist and historian. We should fight against two cliches, against two stereotypes and mainstream ideas and bums. First of all, it is assumed that it is too late to talk about World War II because everything has been said. Everything has been said. The sins have been confessed. The perpetrators have been punished. It is a closed chapter. This is a conviction which tends to prevail. Now, it is time to talk about other, more obscure events in our history, with the Germans focusing on their own suffering. This is one of the tendencies. But not everything has been brought to light. Not everything has been done. Not everything has been dealt with. You were talking about Greece. I could be talking for hours. What happened in Poland, we could be talking to Italians or to other colleagues. The crimes have not been paid for. We should therefore fight against this attitude, which seems to suggest that it's a closed chapter because everything has been dealt with. But it's not true. You are talking about the suffering, which is transferred from one generation to another. Those memories, those painful memories, cannot be forgotten as long as people stay alive. But there is also another issue I'd like to raise, another tendency, which cannot be accepted. Many people tend to say that everything has been said, that the Nazis, the Germans, have paid for what they did in their past. Therefore, there is no point, as those people say, to talk about the war publicly. If someone tries to talk about it nonetheless, he or she will be inevitably accused of using the war for their own political purposes. That would suggest that some topics are allowed while others are banned. This attitude is something which we cannot accept. We should fight against it. Because more and more, increasingly often, people tend to say that there were some abstract Nazis. They didn't have any citizenship. They didn't have any nationality. No one really knows where they came from, the Nazis. An idea of an abstract perpetrator, which we call a Nazi. But it's not how it was. Those were specific people. We can give them names. And often enough, they continued their peaceful lives after the war. I can well imagine that there are some people going through the family pictures. And while going through the family pictures, they are likely to find pictures taken in Greece during World War II. This is something that cannot be forgotten. We cannot describe the perpetrators as abstract aliens from another planet. The history continues to be painful, and we should have an open discussion on that. That's the first conclusion. And secondly, we may not accept that it's a closed book. It will never be closed. Just one more reflection I would like to share, something which seems to be quite crucial to me. The crime we are talking about took place in Europe. It was of a European dimension. Jürgen Strop, I have already mentioned him. He murdered people in Poland, but not only. The same people, the very same people, were the butchers of Poland, Ukraine, Italy, Greece. This is this European dimension. We would like to and we should cherish the memory. We should restore the memory about what has happened. On the 2nd of September, I would like to organise a conference in Warsaw. I invited Mr. Marius and my Greek and Italian colleagues. I'm talking about it because it's our common cause. It's in our common interest. We need to preserve European memory because there are tendencies to undermine, to twist, to distort this memory. This is something which we need to oppose actively. We are the representatives of the nations that were brutally treated. The civilians were murdered, and the perpetrators were never brought to justice. We are representing the nations which have suffered this fate, and we should talk. We should talk together, expressing our opinions. We should express our opinions on our joint European history in this common dialogue. Thank you one more time. Thank you for this very instructive, very useful conference. Thank you for your presentations. Thank you for your speeches. And let me encourage you to come to Warsaw one day. Mr. Marius will be there. But there is nothing to prevent those two Greek villages from launching a twinning project with Polish villages. We could have a partnership between the Greek villages and the Polish counterparts which have suffered the same fate. Perhaps preserving our memory together could help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Krasnodewski. Thank you very much, Professor Krasnodewski. Indeed, we'll be present on the 2nd of September in this great effort that he has undertaken to organise this event in Warsaw. The Polish people and the Greek people need to understand that they did have a common destiny and a common history. We should never forget this. We should also not forget the participation of many Polish people in the Greek revolt in 1821. I would now like to give the floor to colleague Eleonora Ivi, and then to MEP Castaldo, so that we can have this discussion with interpretation. And try to be brief so that we do have interpretation. Afterwards, we might have to continue in Greek. Mr. Kefalo Yanis, I would like to congratulate Mr. Krasnodowski and Mr. Marias for his initiative, because they have to leave. If people lose its historical memory, they will have to go through the same historical events over again. The awareness raising about our common history is very important. Every Greek family has a story like this to tell. Every Greek family has a story like this to tell. When I looked at all these photographs of old women, I remembered my own grandmother who was widowed at the age of 28 and having to survive with four young kids, from the age of 12 to the age of four. Once again, because the German Nazis killed my grandfather, my grandmother remained a widow for 70 years. So every Greek family has a story like that. We know it. What is more important is to take these events of our family and our countries as a bridge to build a common future of prosperity and peace. And in order to get to this point of prosperity and peace, we need to overcome the crimes committed in the past, we need to condemn atrocities like from regimes like the Nazi regime. The European Parliament has been outspoken in condemning such atrocities, both from the past and actually, and then right now. I'm sure that all Greek MEPs, when it comes to issues of national importance, like the one addressed today by Mr Marias, but also the issue of German reparations that has been addressed by Manolis Glazios, we are working together. When we are working together abroad, everything works perfectly. We'll need to find a way to work together and collaborate in Greece as well. Once again, congratulations to Mr Marias for bringing the attention of the general public and of the colleagues at the European Parliament to this issue. Mr Marias, for my side, I would like to thank you, Manolis, for your kind words. Now I would like to give the floor to Eleonora Ivi.
Thank you so much, and I will be very brief. It has been very hard to see such pictures and such images. And I really want to say that, from my point of view, the words of justice and equity are today and more and more on the table, let's say. These should be the words that we will really implement and make real, because I fear that these are words unfortunately empty. Because if we see what's the story tell us and what's the story teach us and what we are also facing today, and these words, to me, it seems really empty. It's a matter of memory, and that's why I thank you all for the witness of this tragedy, of this massacre, because I do really believe that it's really memory the key. And too often in this house also, we don't address this issue and the memory itself as we should do. So that's why in this house, which is the house of democracy and should be the house of solidarity and should be the house that protects the words I said before, so justice and equity. Too often, we do not really tackle and we do not really do our best to keep these memories alive and to learn from the past for our future. I am newly MEP and I've been elected this year, and I'm in politics for really short time. But what I feel is really that we should work for the common future that we will have together, for the construction of a community which is based on solidarity. So this should be the principle that leads all our actions. And sometimes, and today also, I don't feel this is really achieved in a way, as the past has really not so teach so that much to us. So I thanks for being here and for this witness, and I thanks Mr Marias for having organized this event, because I really think that to look to the future that we should share, these are the bases from which we have to start. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Eleonora. Now let me give immediately the floor to Fabio Massimo Castaldo, who is also a member of the Five Stars movement of Pepe Grillo. We fought together in the parliament. Massimo, please.
Dear friends, everyone, thank you very much to be here, to have organized such an event with that painful and shocking witnesses. As several of you have said before, we have that common difficult hard past, especially for my country, because we have lived a particular, specific case. We passed during the Second World War from oppressor to oppressed, so we could see and speak about the two sides, the two dark side and painful side of what was the Second World War. And I must confess that when I was watching those videos, I was thinking also about my family's stories, about the fact that my grandfather was obliged to escape in France because he was a militant anti-fascist, and to not get arrested, he was obliged to escape there, about the uncles of my mothers that were angered as partisans against the Nazi occupation after the 1943. And so such events should push us to reflect also about the famous problem, the famous juridical problem, but also ethical problem of the debts. Of the debts since two sides, because from my side, we know that there were crimes against humanity and acts of barbarism, and as for example, what happened in Distofo. From the other side, the forced loan to the Greek treasury to pay, it's a paradox, to pay for the Nazi occupation. Maybe it would be difficult today to quantify exactly how much. I remember that some years ago, the Councillors' call said that being like a... And it's a paradox for me that from a certain point of view, if there will be a kind of payment for those debts and that payment will be low, it won't respect the huge dimension of the crimes. But from the other side, if it will be too much, it will affect all the Germany national wealth. It's completely a misunderstanding paradox for me, because we could find, it could be possible, especially in such difficult days as today, to find a good balance, because it's a moral and an ethical point of view. And it is important that witness to reflect on which Europe we are building up today, which direction we are taking. And I think that from our point of view, that history, that witnesses teach us, that it should not be a Europe that will be strong with the weaks and weak with the strong states. It should not be, everyone, a Europe that will deny the rule of law. It should be the Europe that will affirm the rule of law. And for everyone, it should not be the Europe of the struggle for life. That's why I think that also the actual rulers of Germany should have... Should see those videos, should reflect and think very carefully to the choice of today, because that's the first generation of rulers in Germany that does not really knows what was the Second World War, because they borned after. And we should really reflect for the future to avoid any kind of terrible mistakes that our children will never forget us, because if you know what happened, you cannot accept any kind of risk to repeat it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, dear colleague Castaldo, for your speech. We've had also meetings in Italy. We work together, not just about German reparations, but against austerity for a different Europe. Who would like to take the floor? Ms Akorafa and Mr Kulonu? Thank you. I'd like to congratulate you for this initiative, to have this meeting in the European Parliament. It is very important. Then I'd like to congratulate and help those who came here to talk to us about these so important, significant events. I'd like to thank the teachers and the students from Comeno, and to say that I consider myself very lucky, because I only very recently visited Distofo for the first time, and I can still see the scars of that tragedy. I'd like to thank them, because through these initiatives, they give us all the possibility not to forget what happened in our country. This strengthens us in our struggle. It is important not to forget, not to forget our history, because without memory, without knowledge of our history, there is no future. There are no words to describe what we saw. A long time ago, I saw the film with Ariiris Fundurus. We all have such stories to tell, because our parents' generation went through these experiences, not maybe wiping out villages. But I remember that my father said, for example, that his house was burned down three times. And my mother told me that the resistance fighters came and they got provisions, because they had to help them. And then the Germans came and as a reprisal burned down their houses. So all this is really shocking. But it's not just the moral side. These people never received reparations for their tragedy, for the people they lost, for their loved ones, and for their property. They tried to remake their lives, but they never managed. So the country who is responsible for these situations has a moral obligation to help all those who suffered from it. So Greece demands, in particular concerning the forced loan and the war operations, demands justice. We demand the implementation of international law, and it's a question of morality, because Germany still has not signed a peace treaty with Greece. Is this possible in a Europe which wants to call itself a united Europe and which considers that there should be equal treatment and peace? So all MEPs, like Mr Kefalo Yannis said previously, we all promote the issue of reparations, united, independently of our political differences that have to do with our party allegiance. But on this issue, we're all united, completely united, so we have a common position. We do not consider that there should be a compensatory behavior, that the loans that Greece has should be considered as a counterweight to this obligation. No, this obligation is an obligation that can never go away. And let me finish with what Manolis Glazios said. Even one mark, German mark, would be reparation. But what is even more important is that no country should ever have to go through something similar. And because a lot happens all around us, let's not forget that this is always possible. So welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Would stay your school or like to take the floor? Yes, very briefly, I would like to congratulate the teachers and the professor for their work at all these schools. It would be great if you could set an example for all your colleagues throughout Greece, because indeed, if you forget history, you are condemned to repeat the same mistakes. Unfortunately, these events are not well known throughout Greece. These events are known only at the villages that had been affected. So I think it is very important that all MEPs take initiatives like the initiative you took today. So we will continue, united, in this effort. Welcome to Brussels. And we will always be listening to your wishes, to your views, and help your efforts. Thank you. So I have been informed that, well, we had scheduled interpretation for up until 7 o'clock. It's 20:07. The chair kindly thanks us, we thank you as well. The Polish booth right over there, and the Greek booth over there. Thank you very much.
And I'll say a few words, closing. I think that the conference has closed. First of all, I would like to thank all of you who attended our conference. I would like to congratulate our professors and colleagues. I think that they showed us the work they do, because we have to address these issues in a different way. First of all, we don't have to be lazy. Second, we have to show our gratitude for our colleagues. Third, at the same time, we have to elect a president who is decisive and will speak. From here and there, the Queen of the Empire, who came so close to us. The President of Comeno, the Deputy Minister of Distofo, the European partners, and the European partners, the colleague, Mr Krasnodowski, and Eleonora Ivi. We see that we will go very close in our cooperation, because there are negotiations in Poland and Italy. We think that it is on the top of the list the restoration of the political institutions, €108,000,000 in total, the mandatory foreign lending, €54,000,000 in total, the elimination of the national debt, the restoration of the archaeological deposits, and undoubtedly, the withdrawal of the Distofo. All of this is in the joint agreement. We will continue to play the game. I would like to thank the European partners from the Netherlands, the French European partners who were with us in the conference. I appreciate you all, and the game continues. Thank you.